Hi and welcome to our inaugural city council forum. Tonight, we are going to be interviewing the uncontested races for city council. And I am Jenny Loughlin, President of Richardson Area Democrats. Tonight, Joel Montfort, our Vice President, is going to be the moderator. And I will introduce to you the candidates in the order that they're going to be speaking. Mayor Paul Velker is here.
He'll be up first.
They'll be up first. Janet DePue is the Mayor Pro Tem and Place 3 candidate. Ken Hutchenreider is Place 5. Yes, right? And I'm sorry. And Jennifer Justice is going to be joining us. And she is uncontested, new Place 2. So, welcome to all of you. Thank you for joining us tonight. And the format that we're going to be following tonight is Joel will introduce each candidate. They will each be given five minutes to answer the quest, introduce themselves and answer the questions that we posed to them earlier. And those are, one, why do you want to run for city council? Why do you want to serve again if that's your case or in the first place in Jennifer's case? Number two is what have you done that you could say you hang your hat on? And number three is what do you hope to accomplish in this next term? So then after they've answered those questions or, you know, given their introductions, they will be given two to three questions that we've gotten from the community. And if you have any other questions that you want to know, if time allows, we will ask them. And you can write those questions in the Facebook comment section. And we have someone monitoring that. Pat Griffin is monitoring that and will be sending those questions over to us. So without further ado, I will introduce Joel. Please take it away. Thank you.
Good evening, all of you. And thank you very, very much for coming to this. This is our inaugural event. So we're very excited to have all the city council people participate. So tonight, we're going to start out with Mayor Velker. Paul, you can take it away.
Thanks, Joel. And hi, I am Mayor Paul Velker of the City of Richardson. I've served on city council since 2013, and I've been mayor since 2015. I moved to the Richardson area in 1983 to take a job right out of college with Hilla Packard. That place, that position was on Campbell Road just east of US 75. My wife and I met each other at William Penn University in Iowa, and that's where we're both from. And we have one son, Ryan. Professionally, I consider myself kind of a product of telecom corridor. I spent my career in computer telecommunications in the software industry, holding positions in sales and marketing, portfolio management, alliance management, and corporate development jobs. I currently work for an artificial intelligence-based analytic software and services company. It's called Lone Star Analysis. And it's been my honor to serve as the mayor of this city. Why would I want to be mayor again? I tell people on a weekly basis, I meet some of the top companies in the world right here in Richardson. And I get to visit schools here that are from pre-K to PhD, both public and private. And I get to work with over 400 nonprofits that address the needs of social services and cultural arts, and they all call Richardson home. So I get to meet the best, the brightest, and the most giving people on a weekly basis. So it's a pretty cool job. The thing I'm most proud of on the council actions are my votes on the Spring Creek Nature Area. It's a land and zoning agreement that preserves over 100 acres of virgin hardwood forests and grasslands. Moving forward as mayor, the work that the chamber and the city have collaborated on in studying and planning, along with actions the council took in rezoning the area called the Innovation Quarter, will forever change the way the city approaches economic development, changing the focus from chasing big companies with large tax incentives to building the infrastructure and ecosystems to help entrepreneurs and small companies start here and grow here. That's the vision, and I'm excited to continue to work on it. And I thank you for allowing me to be part of this today, the inaugural one. Thanks, Joel. Questions?
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate that. Okay, we've got a few questions here, so I'm just going to go right in and dive in and let you give us your feedback. What do you see as the greatest challenges facing Richardson? And the flip side of that, what do you think are our most promising opportunities? That's from Pat in Canyon Creek.
Okay, well, they go hand in glove, actually. The challenges we have is the aging infrastructure and housing stock that we have here. So that can be viewed as a problem. But because we're the first entering city and our employment center that we have and the taxations that we get from corporate business, it's allowing us to upgrade that infrastructure and, I believe, be extremely competitive for job creation and for a place where people really do want to live. If you would have told me even 10 years ago that areas like the Heights would be some of the hottest land that there is in the metroplex, let's be candid, with its mid-century modern housing stock, I probably wouldn't have believed you. But I tell people all the time, you know, today's workforce wants to live in grandma and grandpa's house, not their parents' house because of the size, the neighborhoods, the amenities that have been allowed to mature, like the trees. And the fact that you can walk in any neighborhood in this city and get to a park. And so I love watching the turnover happen in some of these neighborhoods now with, you know, couples with kids in strollers going to parks and stuff. So we always have to be mindful of repairing our roads, repairing the sewer systems, the basic blocking and tackling of a city, but also not be afraid to say those are advantages because we're established, because we have transit that is so central to our success, whether that be highways, the light rail, the coming commuter rail, our approach to biking and walkability that's evolving. Those are all things I'm proud of.
Okay, great. Okay, the second question, what are your thoughts or ideas to increase diversity on boards and committees in Richardson? And that's from Frank in Mark Twain.
So it's a great question, and it's one that I don't think we've done a good enough job on over the years. I've been on council, as I said, since 2013. I know I've reached out and several council members have reached out, literally begging people to apply for positions. And I'm going to use this as an opportunity to once again ask you to seriously consider, you know, city-based boards and commissions. Not that some of the work that many of you do on the nonprofits or faith-based or other things aren't important, and please continue doing that. But I want diversity on our boards and commissions. One of the reasons, quite bluntly, is if you look at the makeup of our current council, Ms. DePue is the exception, we're not very diverse. Jennifer will be joining us, but I would like to see people of color, people of different ethnic backgrounds. One of the reasons is because, not because it's the popular or politically correct thing to do, part of it's because we, as a city, have been that way for years. The success of this city is our diversity. I joke with people that when I'm at work in a high-tech environment, you know, I am the minority. I am with people from India, from all over the rest of Asia, Latin America, Eastern Europe, the Mideast. That is Richardson. It's not only in my work environment, but it's in my neighborhood. And so council and the boards and commissions should definitely reflect that. And shame on us if it doesn't. We need to work harder at it. I need your help, though. Please fill out applications. I know some have, and it takes patience. We just filled nine seats last Monday. We'll be making those announcements in probably two weeks. We have to get everything confirmed. We still have 100 people at most on the list. I need more on that list so I can have better choices to look at. So I hope that answered the question.
That's good to hear. I like to hear that. Okay, the third question, how can we get Richardson's PD Crisis Intervention Program to have more social workers showing up to calls and less uniformed officers? And that's from Justin in City Line.
Okay, I could probably talk an hour on this, so I'm going to try to narrow it down. I want to look at it from a bigger perspective, and I'll frame it from a social mental health policing perspective. I look at it as a triangle. At the top is the Network of Community Ministries, which we heavily rely on from a social services standpoint. They do triage. They are our first contact for all aspects of how do we engage agencies, different nonprofits, state, federal, local level resources. They're really good at that. Mr. Hutchenreider, as his other hat, the CEO of Richardson Methodist, has really stepped up, along with the police department, to come in with this mental health tiger team that we're talking about here. There's another arm that a lot of people may or may not know about, and that's on the victim's side of crime. And the counseling place is another area that we put a lot of resources in as a city, but also ask for help from the private sector there, too. And that's for victims. With respect to calls by the police department that possibly are or are mental health, I also talked to those mental health workers. There is a fine line between one of them showing up in the middle of an incident that could be quite dangerous. And I'll be honest, if, you know, I hope that I never have to sit across the table from a widow of a police officer or a social worker who was on a call that turned violent and caused the death of someone. So I will tell you, we will err on the side of safety first and then engage those tiger teams as appropriate to the end point of getting that individual the help they need from a mental health perspective, not a policing judicial perspective. And that's something that we'll be monitoring as we implement this over time. It's still a new group, and we'll figure out what the right actions are. I can understand that you are concerned that if too many police show up, it might escalate or it might be intimidating. But at this point in time, we really think we've found a good balance. But we'll continue to tweak, continuous improvements in our DNA.
Okay, that's a good question and good answer. Okay, we're at our 15 minutes for you, Mayor. So we really appreciate your time, and I would love to keep asking you questions, but when we're going to fall behind, then I don't follow sleek rulings.
Paul.Dot.Gov, anytime, please email me.
There you go. C O R dot net or gov, or there's a three to differ.
Yeah, it's dot gov.
There you go. Our next one is Janet DePue. Janet, if you want to introduce yourself and go through your statement, that would be great.
Hello, everybody. Janet DePue, thank you, Joel, for the introduction, and thank you, Jenny, for all of you for putting this together. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody. So a little bit about me, I've lived in Richardson for over 30 years, probably. My kids went to school here. So, you know, I'm entrenched in Richardson. I do live in the Heights Park area. I don't live in the park, but I do live across the street from the park. So this is my second term on council. I've been volunteering for many, many years. I started probably volunteering in my neighborhood, you know, organizing the Neighborhood Association. I was president of the Neighborhood Association for 10 years or so. I was on the plan commission for 10 years. So I cycle off that plan commission, and I handed over the reins of my neighborhood work to someone else. So, you know, if you're a passionate volunteer, you understand when those things stop, you know, you wonder what's next. So for me, the council work was next. I like to stay apprised of what's happening in Richardson. I like to stay involved and be part of it. I think I have a lot to give. I'm the Realtor, so I understand neighborhood issues and resident issues like that. So I think I have enough to offer that I need to keep working on it. So regarding accomplishments, I think that we've had, the last year and a half or so has been very challenging for the city with the tornado back in a year ago, a year and a half ago in October, that devastated one of our beautiful neighborhoods. We've had the pandemic. We've had the snow mageddon. So I think, I think what I'm most proud of is the way that the city and the residents have come together to manage these crises. You know, as I was Neighborhood President, I always thought about if we had a crisis, how would we communicate with each other? How would we deal with some of these issues if we had a major issue pop up? And I think what's happened is that our organizations, Network and the Houses of Faith and the city staff and our emergency management office have all come together to figure out how to deal with and help residents. And I think, to me, that's one of the best things that's come out of all of these issues that we've had recently. Our neighborhoods, I watched the Richland Park neighborhood, neighborhood residents come together and help each other, the businesses that help each other, they've all rallied together. So I think our city community is one that shares resources. They help neighbors. And when problems arise, I think citizens come forward with solutions instead of complaints. So I think that's, that to me is fantastic. And then I'll close out just a little bit with the continued work that I hope to do is I love welcoming the new businesses that come here, the small businesses. They're so excited to have the Richardson address. I love doing that. I think they're excited about it. I love the redevelopment work because, as Mayor spoke about, the redevelopment work to me is one of the most interesting aspects of being on council. I think being in real estate gives me an opportunity to see how our decision, the decisions that the council and city staff work on really affect neighborhoods and residents and businesses. And there's so many facets to that that we, it's, you have to really dig deep to understand what's going on. And I think we've done such a great job, since we are a first-string suburb, of maintaining the vibrancy of Richardson and helping it grow. Other first-string suburbs don't fare that well. So I think we've done a very good job as a city to manage that and keep our city beautiful. So I just want to continue that work. I want to continue the work on Spring Valley. I've been working on that Spring Valley project for many years, on the plan commission and before that even. And I think, you know, that's a very difficult area to deal with, but I think I'm excited to continue that work and as well as the Innovation Quarter. I think that's going to be a very, that's going to be an awesome area for us. And then with the Dart rail coming through and the cotton belt, I think, I think Richardson's got a lot of potential, continued potential. And I'd like to, I'm excited to have new council people that, you know, will all think outside the box and hopefully grow Richardson again, some more, and continue to be vibrant. Thank you.
I think we can all agree on that. Okay, so Janet, my first question for you is, Richardson has vibrant industries and lots of job opportunities for entry-level workers, but almost no affordable apartment units in the city. As a city council member, what do you think needs to be done to encourage additional types of housing that will accommodate these essential workers? And that is from Pam in Greenwood Hills.
Okay, Pam. So I have actually, that's a great question, and I'm happy to answer that. I don't necessarily have the perfect answer, but I do have a couple of ideas. I think, you know, I have been talking actually probably three times with a developer builder who is trying to put some new housing product in into a, you know, we don't have a lot of empty land in Richardson, so we don't have a lot of options for that. But we do have some, and he's looking at some space, not too far from me, actually. And he's brought a different kind of product. So, so I think when we look at these situations and we think, we think, you know, have an open mind about some of this, I think we'll, we'll do a better job of welcoming some of these other types of housing. The, my main concern is now and always will be, is equality. Because I think if we, if we just look at price and don't look at the quality of the product, then we, then we start decreasing our property values. And I think any person that's in real estate would agree with that. So I think, you know, we have lots of apartments, you know, some neighborhoods don't want apartments near them, but I think that we have, we've tried to locate apartment buildings along, we'll have some, hopefully some housing in the Innovation Quarter. We've got some sections of that area tagged for some housing. So I'm hoping that we can invite some builders, developers, that will bring us some new product that we can look at, that is still maintains the quality that we want to have in Richardson so that all property values hold the line and stay beautiful and offer people some type of options for living here. Now, we are in a huge metropolitan area, and the closer you get to downtown Dallas, the more expensive it gets. So with Richardson being a first-string suburb, we're pretty, pretty close to downtown Dallas. So, you know, there is a reality of, if you, you know, if you want a big house and you want, you know, less expense, sometimes you have to go further away. So we always have to think about that as well. I hope that answered some of it. I don't have, I don't want to take up too much time on it, but it's a very complicated subject.
Right. Most of these aren't simple, one sec. Yeah, that's for sure.
Yes.
Can you see a way to support Section 8 housing in Richardson?
I think that that would be honestly, Joel, I think that thing to get past neighborhoods and residents and developers and businesses, I think that would be honestly a very difficult situation. I think that we can, we can manage if we're careful and creative, we can manage some housing without necessarily having such a day.
Okay. Final question. This is from Julia in Canyon Creek, and she is saying, after the Palisades vote, how would this council protect residents and property values in future plans for the Prairie Creek Park? Saying there's a lot of opposite to current plans.
So, so repeat that question again. I didn't hear the cut out.
After the Palisades, council protect residents and property values in future plans for Prairie Creek Park?
Okay, so I think there is, there's some study going on right now for the Prairie Creek Park area and that street along there. That's still, you know, we're taking comments and questions from residents right now, then filling out surveys and whatnot. So we're studying that area. I think the Palisades issue, you know, I was on the plan commission during Palisades case when it came before us. And I think the city has been, has tried to be very, very transparent, especially since the Palisades vote and the council's decision. I can't speak too much to the actual case because it's still probably ongoing. So, you know, I don't want to step outside my bounds to comment on things that I, that I don't have knowledge of. But I think that, I think the city is so committed right now to being so transparent. We have, we've revised some of the ethics, code of ethics. We've, we've put in place a social media policy. So I think the, the Palisades and the Prairie Creek Park, I think we were, they're not exactly related, but the, the park, I think will be, you know, we're trying to look at some options on how to deal with the traffic that goes up there and disrupt those residents' lives. I hope I answered most of that question for you. If not, please email, you know, or give me a call or whatever.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Janet. We really appreciate it. And I know these questions are desperate and interesting and all their other ways. So next up, we have Ken Hutchenreider, Councilmember Ken Hutchenreider. Would you like to make a opening statement?
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you all this evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Ken Hutchenreider. My daytime job is I'm President of Medical Center. My wife moved here 11 years ago and immediately became incredibly involved in the city. I immediately went to work with the chamber. I also became very involved with the Plano ISD School Foundation because that was very important to me. My wife became involved in Network and also is now on the board of Network of Community Ministries. We've, we have two daughters, Carolyn and Kimberly. They are currently students at Texas A&amp;M University, which is where I went. And so I guess maybe I had a little bit of an influence on them to follow in my footsteps. The, the thing that I would tell you is that from my standpoint, the things that I'm proud of, number one, Paul took my first one, Janet took my second one. So I'll, I'll move now to my third one. And I think that's really, looking at it from my perspective, being in healthcare, it's our COVID-19 response. Obviously, you know, COVID-19 has been a horrific situation. Obviously, one death is too many. Unfortunately, there's, there's so many things that's out of the city's control. But I think we've, I think thanks to our city management, our mayor, our city council, we've had a very, very appropriate and measured response. I think that we've worked very, very diligently. A lot of things behind the scenes that people don't see on a day-to-day basis, where we would receive a call that said, oh, my goodness, there's a person at a nursing home who is testing positive for COVID, so we need to send the entire nursing home to the hospital or to some type of care area. Our city EMS Health Department became very, very involved, would work with the nursing home to appropriately segregate, test the residents, obviously send those that needed health care to the hospital, but really still allow them to remain in their, their homes. Our city staff did a wonderful job of being able to consistently update us as a city council. Mayor Volpl, yeah, sorry, Mayor Velker, I'll get it right. Mayor Volker, yeah, sorry, Mayor Velker, I'll get it right here. Very, very appropriate declarations, and I think we had a very appropriate and very, very measured response. As far as our greatest challenge, I think that our, we have several. Obviously, the aging infrastructure, you've also touched on some of it. I think the inclusion, inclusion of diversity into our community. One of the things that Paul mentioned, and one of the things I think you'll see in the next little while in the realm of diversity, is with the, with the upcoming announcement of the boards and commission members that we have appointed, assuming this, except I think you'll see more inclusion, which I'm very, very proud of. Working in healthcare, I work with everyone, you know, from obviously very, very strong, given this is the international year of women. I work with so many women, I work with so many different folks from various, various countries, from various backgrounds and nationalities. And so I think, I think we have to continue to work on all of those things. But I'm so proud of our city. I love our city. I'm convinced that we live in an absolutely great city, and we just have to continue to move forward. And, and I think it's, you know, making those changes that we've already talked about tonight. And I think, I think one thing too, is you have a very, well, we each have our own vote, we each have our own opinion. I think you have a lot of consensus in the things that we've already talked about tonight and that we will tackle as we move forward in the future.
Okay, great. First question for you, Ken, is what are the most, is what are the most substantial changes you have enacted in Richardson this term? And what do you believe the future of Richardson should be?
Um, I think, I think Janet touched on one that I'll reemphasize, and I think that was on the code of conduct that we've, that we've put into place, the social media policy. You know, everyone has the right to have their, their opinion, and it can certainly be viewed, but I think at no time should any of us as a member of city council try to represent opinion and, and make it appear that it is in some way, shape, or form, an official opinion from the city or in some other type of way. So I think that's been something that's been very positive, the IQ district that we've talked about. But I'll also say that I think we, one of the things that was, I think a very, it was a negative vote, but it was, I believe it was positive is when we tackled the Owens Farms issue. It was a, it was turned down. We had very strong outpouring from the neighborhoods. They had great concerns about what was going to be there. We listened as a council, which is what I strongly feel my duty is. I'm not there representing myself, I'm not there representing my, my company or anything other than I'm representing the citizens of Richardson. And I love when the citizens contact me and let me know their viewpoint. And so I think we listened and we voted against that. So I think those are just a couple of things that I think have been, that have been positive.
Okay. Back to the COVID and the current pandemic we're in, you know, we have well over 5,000 elderly residents over the age of 65 in Richardson who are at a higher risk of getting COVID and having significant side effects. Why hasn't the city of Richardson opened a vaccination site, even at your hospital as an example, locally like several other surrounding cities have? And that is from Kim in Cottonwood Creek.
Sure. When this, when the whole COVID-19 pandemic initially started, quickly counties were the ones who were in the lead on this, in addition with the state and with FEMA. And it's been determined that the best approach is to have these large centers established where people can go to one site where vaccine can be utilized, vaccine then is not, my words wasted, and allowed to expire. And so it's been very much driven by FEMA, so federal level, state level, and county level. So that is why, as we, as we walked through this and were asking questions and were advised, is that these were going to be set up at the federal, state, and county level. And so that's, that's really honestly the reason why.
Okay, okay. What do you think is the biggest challenge here in Richardson? And what would you do to correct it?
Um, well, I think, I think the biggest challenge we're going to have is, is our, coming out of our COVID-19 response. We're hearing, or at least I've heard, that we're going to lose quite a number of restaurants, other businesses that we, that, that will not make it through the entire COVID-19 situation. There was a very strong push a number of years ago with the city, with economic development, with the Chamber, of really trying to create restaurant destinations here in the city. And so I think that's going to be, that's going to be a major challenge for us. I think that the whole economic redevelopment that the mayor talked about in the IQ district and in other areas, I think we've, I think we've moved along very, very positively, positively in those areas, but I think there's still more work to be done. And then I think something that hasn't been touched on tonight is SB2, where local control has been really, if you will, taken away from us via the, via the state. You know, I think, I think at the end of the day, and I think others share this viewpoint, is that the decisions of Richardson need to occur within Richardson with a, with an elected city council, elected mayor, appointed city management, where we sit and determine what is, what is best for the city of Richardson. With SB2, they, they took that away from us. And there's been a, you know, various aspects of that that have been put into place, and I think it's, and I think it will continue to do, it will continue to have harm overall for our city. You know, and some of the other things that have come through where, you know, no longer can we set simple building standards as far as outside, or not outside, but the outer coverings of buildings, to ensure, like Janet was talking about, you know, if you're, whatever type of housing we're creating or other type of businesses that are coming to town, being able to set some just good, solid, quality standards, I think is very, very important. And that's been stripped away from, from us, i.e. the loss of local control. So I think all of those things are going to be challenging for us as we move into the, into the future.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate all your time, all of y'all so far. And our last guest tonight is the new council member, Jennifer Justice. Jennifer, you want to give your opening remarks?
Thank you, Joel, and thank you, Jenny. I'm excited to be here, and I'm still sort of reeling from the fact that I'm in an uncontested race and that I'm going to be the newest member of city council. That still feels unreal to me. So my name's Jennifer Justice. I am still a candidate at this point in place two. I grew up in Richardson. I went to Mark Twain Elementary School, Richardson Junior High, when we still had one. It's now MST Elementary, and graduated from Burkner High School before I went on to become a Red Raider, where I majored in sociology and criminology, and then went to work for a nonprofit for 10 years, where I served as the Director of Global Community Building. And while I was doing that, I went to law school at night at SMU, and I'm now a practicing attorney. I spent several years in private practice, and now I'm in-house handling matters related to professional liability litigation. So that's my professional background, and I think it's something unique and important that we can add to city council is a legal expertise that we currently don't have. So while I cannot counsel the city council by any means, it is sort of a perspective that I think is an important one that we have on our city council. What led me to run for council? As I mentioned, I grew up in Richardson, so I have been fortunate to benefit from the foresight and planning of prior councils and city administrations. And, you know, I want to continue the good work. I want to represent the future of Richardson, and I think that I sort of uniquely amongst the members of council will be able to do that, to be able to represent what our city has grown into and what it can become. Part of what led me to want to serve is, is my service, to be frank, sort of as Janet said. I served as a Neighborhood Association President, and then I served on two boards and commissions, the Civil Service Board and Library Board. And this felt like to me the next natural step in my service, as Janet said, what do you do next? And so I wanted to, I wanted to serve on council. And some out, some of you out there know, I ran in 2009 as a 20-something against Mark Solomon, who is now supporting me in this race. So we've come full circle on that. But, you know, I think that this is a unique opportunity to serve, and so that's why I want to run for city council. I haven't been on council yet, so I don't have anything to really hang my hat on, but while I, what I will say is, what has prepared me is my, my legal background and my service to the city. And I will say that I've done everything as a private citizen I think you can do to gain knowledge about the way that our city government works. I've participated in many programs in Leadership Richardson and the CARES program, and in our fire and police, our citizens' fire and police academies. So I've done my homework to the best extent that you can, like I said, as a private citizen. And I'm using our city resources now to try and come in as prepared as possible. I've heard it referred to as drinking from a fire hose, and I'm sure it will be that way on day one for me, but I'm, I'm doing everything I can to prepare to hit the ground running on day one. And the thing that I hope to contribute to the city, you know, we haven't mentioned the bond yet. There's going to be a bond election likely coming up for vote in November. And having served on the library board, you know, I hope that we fund the library in a way that I think is meaningful. You know, we've, the city council and our city administration have done a great job of addressing our aging infrastructure and to the buildings that haven't been addressed in a long time, and our city hall and our library. And for those of you that out there that don't know, our city library is the most trafficked building in our city, the most heavily trafficked building, you know, more than our recreation centers, for example. And something also interesting is they're still doing a million in circulation every year. And so not all of us use our library in a meaningful way, but it's clear that many, many of our citizens do. And the way that they've adapted in this pandemic has been incredible, the service that they've offered to the citizens. So I hope that, that we get the library the love that it needs as part of the bond package.
Okay. The first question for you, Jennifer, is Richardson has a number of older retail buildings. An example of that would be Arapahoe West at Custer. How do we encourage retail renovation without losing the unique character of our city? That's from Pat in Canyon Creek.
Thank you, Pat. I think it's a good question, and I think that you're seeing some good examples of it happening now in our city. The Lockwood area, I think, is a good example of a very aging and somewhat dilapidated area of our city that is now seeing some love. If you haven't been down there, I encourage you to go. It's on Lockwood Drive, just north of Beltline, and we have a distillery there, we have a great coffee cooperative, some great noodles that you can go get there as well. And so I think that that's an example of, of the way that developers have come in and have, have had some foresight into how we can revitalize those areas. And if you look at the Main Street development as well, how we can preserve some of the businesses that have been there for a long time and encourage new businesses to come in, I think that there's already evidence of that happening in our city. And, you know, as part of our economic development partnership with the Chamber, we are going to continue to do that. I think it's, the mayor mentioned, it's one of the missions to continue to develop our city. So I think there's already evidence of it happening, to answer your question.
Great. Okay. David in Richland Park asks if you support the idea of a publicly available indoor pool?
I think that's a difficult question to ask. I assume that that's in reference to the Apollo land, and there having been discussion of that. I think that our pools are very expensive, and that if we were to have one, that we would have to be really creative about the way that we make it available to all of our citizens. I think that's part of the problem, is that it can become something that is only utilized by our schools. And, you know, it's not a comfortable place for our seniors to go. So I think that, I can't answer yes or no, whether I would support it. I would have to see a plan first, and, you know, I know that that has been kicked around and is one of the many ideas that have been proposed for the Apollo land. But, you know, if we can find a good way to make it available and useful for all of our citizens, then, you know, it certainly couldn't hurt. But whether or not I would support it, I would need to see a plan first.
Gotcha. Okay. Another question is, if Richardson received a $1 million grant for the city that could be used any way you wanted, what would you do with it? In other words, what would be at the top of your list?
Yeah, so I'll give you two. One, I've already sort of alluded to, and that my passion project being the library. I think that they can use all the help they can get. So since I've already sort of tipped my hand to the library, I'll give you another example. We have a public-private partnership with Network that was mentioned here, and they have a new building that they're trying to build out. And so I think that that would be an excellent place for those funds to go. They serve all of the zip codes in Richardson, and they truly serve all of them. You know, we might not see that our neighbors need to use Network, but they do. And so I think that, that helping them build out their new building and expand their service to RISD and through healthcare, I think is a great way that we could utilize those type of funds, because they, they can service our citizens in a way that we, that we're unable to. And so providing them those funds, I think, is an ideal way to go. Oh, I will say that some don't know, but they are also part of our emergency operations in the city as well. And so they actually service the city in addition to serving the citizens. They were instrumental when the tornadoes came along. And, you know, again, instrumental in the way that they helped folks after the ice storms and all of that. So, you know, it's not just the citizens they're helping, they actually help us as a city serve our citizens.
Great. Okay, Jennifer, appreciate your time, all four of you. Thank you very mu, thank you very much. We actually wrapped up a couple of minutes early, so that's kind of nice. Everybody did a really nice job of containing themselves. Jenny, back.
You know, since we're a little bit early, there's been quite a bit of conversation on our, on our chat on Facebook, and I'm wondering if I can just throw this question out to all of you, since we have a few minutes, and anybody can catch it that wants to. But there's some questions about the city buildings not going to follow, not being clear on whether we're going to follow the CDC guidelines, or if we're going to go with the governor's idea, letting go of the mask mandates. So if somebody maybe
I take that.
Talk about that. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah. So first and foremost, yes, we're following CDC guidelines. But I will remind people that they are guidelines from the federal government. And all of us, the Toronto Council, take an oath of office to follow the United States and Texas Constitution and the laws of the state of Texas, and to instrument our charter. So I want to give that as a backdrop. So if you go into, and I was in city hall today, it is mandatory that all city employees wear a mask and practice social distancing. We've not changed any of our process from Tuesday to Thursday with respect to your interaction at city hall as an example. We still use the grand hall to have a central place so that we can maintain distance and have an order to, to protect people. With respect to the aspect of the governor's order specific to wearing masks, one aspect of his order was that no county or city could enforce the use of a mask ordinance. Austin has put one in, and the Attorney General is now going to sue them. I would prefer not to spend your tax dollars in court over a law that I would probably lose any lawsuit on. So if you come into city hall, you'll be greeted by and work with a person that is masked. We will highly recommend that you wear a mask. We will ask you to wear a mask. In a, in a publicly owned and operated building by a government, I cannot force you to leave. If I were a business, I could do that, and I could actually have the police come and ask you to leave, and if you don't, I could call it trespassing. Because it is a government building owned by citizens, all citizens, I can't keep you from coming in. That's just the law, and I'm, like the rest of the council, sworn to obey the law. So we're going to be as protective as we can. We are using CDC guidelines. As you might all know, they're changing sometimes on a daily basis, but we're watching them. I get questions about city council meetings. We do social distancing. You'll notice I, we don't wear You'll notice I, we don't wear masks because of the social distancing. I will let you all know that everyone on city council is now vaccinated. Everybody used different methods to get there, but, but we've all been vaccinated and senior staff has too. So I guess technically we can gather as a group and, and not even have social distancing. But we will maintain that both as a practice and as a model for others. And to reemphasize, if you do come to city hall for meetings, that you understand that we are prioritizing safety. So I, I hope that answers that question.
Yeah, thank you very much. That's, that's very clear. I, I completely understand that you don't have the, the, you know, the, the authority to create those kinds of rules. I think that maybe this is just me being personal. I think that it would be good to find a way to communicate that to the city in a way that, that's effective, that people don't feel like it's up to you, that you've just made a decision or that the council has just made this decision.
I would, I would love for more people to watch city council, city council meetings, first of all. And I invite you to go back and watch last Monday's work session. Don Magner did a wonderful job of explaining in much clearer form than I did just now what our policies, procedures and actions are going to be moving forward and how they reflect our past practices. Also, please, you know, read Richardson Today. Sign up for the weekly updates from the city. We have seven forms of media communications that we use as a, as an institution, right? And I always, I'm amazed at how many people tell me they've never heard from the city. Other than me walking door to door, I don't know much more how I can do this. But I've thought about that. But there are 28,000 homes and, you know, another 30,000 or 40,000 multifamily environments. I might struggle to get that done, but all, all joking aside, look at the city council meetings, they, they're very, very informative. Even community impact and, and, and the Dallas Morning News publishes what, what our policies are. So there are ways to, to, to get that information. And, and, you know, we offer the Richardson Today and, and also video-based format now too. So you don't have to just read it, you can click on it on the internet and, and, and do that. But I truly do encourage people to go to Richard, to the city council meetings. I know they can be a little dry sometimes, but they're packed full of information, I promise.
One, one more question that somebody just wrote in on the, on the Facebook chat that I think everybody will be interested in. We're all disappointed at, but, you know, congratulatory towards Chief Spivey for his upcoming retirement. And we're interested to know what, what the council's input is going to be as far as what they want in a new chief, besides another Chief Spivey.
Well, can I take that one too?
Sure.
Okay, sorry. I, I hate to pull the mayor card. Let me step back one, one step again, because it's really important. I, I, I really, one of the reasons I want you to go to council meetings is because I need people to better understand the role of government and the governance model that a government like the city of Richardson has. So that you understand what the relationship between staff and council is, how decisions are made and implemented, where the responsibilities are. So think of council as a board of directors and I'm the chairman of the board. We set goals, strategies. The staff and the city implements those strategies through tactics, measures those tactics in a quantifiable way and presents them back to us. So in the context of public safety and specifically the police chief, we set goals with respect to what we believe a safe community is, what our expectations are of policing and how we would like to see us as a community evolve, whether it be mental health, whether it be aspects that we addressed this last summer after the murder of George Floyd, some of the input that the citizens and council gave to increase the level of visibility that the community has to impart. Having said all that, I like to tell people we have a really simple job on council. We hire and fire the city manager. What I mean by that is the chief of police and, and the department heads in general, but police and fires specifically to public safety, report directly to the city manager. It is his job to hire that replacement. Our input is to Dan Johnson, the city manager, in the context of those goals and strategies we have for our community. I have no plans of interviewing any of the candidates. You know, I don't want to get into a situation where there are too many cooks in the kitchen. If, if our message as council is not crystal clear to Dan Johnson, then we as a council have failed. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, yes. Well, I think that we have come right up on eight o'clock and I'm really excited. The fact that almost everybody that joined this group, that, that joined the, the Facebook Live event is still on. We kept their attention. So thank you all, all four of you for joining us this evening, for giving us your time, your service. And, and we'll look forward to another two years of continued good relationship with, between the council and, and Richardson area Democrats. We've really appreciated the way that you've worked with us in the past couple of years and, and look forward to more of that. So thank you so much for your, for your time this evening.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
And thank you all for watching, for listening and staying with us. Good night.